The Willing and Board of Education meeting to order on Tuesday, November 10. This is a virtual meeting. The next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would like to stand, we can recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Which stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We didn't see that together, but it came through nicely.
I move to amend the agenda.
Yes, Michelle.
I move to amend the agenda to add option nine B on the agenda to reschedule our special meeting that was canceled on November 4th on the topic of mental health services.
I'll second that, Tracy Anderson.
Okay, discussion. To the motion.
Elena has her hand up, Herb.
Elena.
Yes, Elena Testa. I truly think that every time when we spend more time on this topic, we're just stealing in reality a time which to consider questions which were really deprived in time. I think we should take a break from this particular question and start catching up on the business during such a challenging time in our schools. Because we are really not on top on what's going on. I'm talking about the board. I'm sure superintendent is, but not the board. So I truly think it would be very unproductive to continue to move, at least at this time, with this question. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Tracy.
Tracy.
I would like to, well, it's my opinion that I think that this is a very important topic, that it shouldn't be pushed aside based on the amount of conversation that has come through present to speak, as well as the attention that is being given to mental health coming from the state level Department of Education on down, that we should not be ignoring this. I think this is a priority that we should be attending to. And it's having a special meeting just for that. We're not wasting time during a regular meeting.
Okay, any other comments you would like to make? Okay, the motion is to to hold a special meeting. We've had, we have been discussing this issue for a long time. It's been, you know, it's close to a year now. And putting it back on the agenda, I don't know. For a special meeting, I don't know if we're gonna, it would be productive. And that we've covered so much ground relative to it. If some of us, some of you are for it and some are against it. And we seem to be just spinning our wheels on that. I don't, I really don't know whether a special meeting would be that productive or where it would go. There, there are other ways of tackling this issue. And I was hoping the board could, you know, could do that. But I don't know whether I would approve a special meeting at this time.
And I'd like to note that the motion did not say at a special meeting or at a regular meeting. I just said that we were gonna add that conversation to reschedule that meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Had been scheduled for a special meeting on the 4th to continue the conversation we had in October. It was canceled with no reason as to why, whether it was a quorum issue, whether the speakers couldn't come, whether. So we had planned to meet. And that was the agreement at the end of the October meeting. And so it was my expectation that we were gonna continue that conversation. And therefore, the item voting on now is just to have the conversation about how to reschedule that time.
We do have, as I said, we've just been discussing this for a year. And it hasn't been going anywhere. And we have so many other items that we could be addressing and using our time for this. This is taking an enormous amount of time and energy from all board members, when we should be addressing other issues. But that's just one, that's just one, you know, one opinion in regard to it. You can look at it from all kinds of angles. But I, I don't see that it would be a productive time.
Ann has her hand up.
Ann, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Herb. I feel, I agree with you that we're wasting a lot of time going over it and over it and over it and over it. When we're repeating ourselves, I, we have all kinds of evidence that we have had at our first meeting and our second meeting. And if you all would rather not hold another meeting and discuss it that way, I think we're ready to bring it to a vote. And at that point, it's then up to the superintendent to implement the plan, whichever way it goes. If it's voted down, that's fine. At least we've listened to our residents. We've had so many parents and teachers come forward and speak on behalf of this. I feel that we owe them the courtesy of, at the very least, a vote. And if it's voted down, so be it. That's fine. And then we can let it go. And I think they would understand that. But, and we don't have to have another workshop. We don't, I think we've gotten lots of information, lots of really valuable information from a lot of constituents.
Herb, I think Donna has her hand up. I'm not, yep, she does.
I didn't see it.
Sorry, I was wrong way. Um, I'm a little confused about two, couple things. One is, we already, it was already voted on for that outside group to come in, and it was voted down. It was not approved, however you want to look at it. It was not approved. And I don't know what's appropriate or inappropriate. Timing wise, Tallinn has taken it out of the school and put it to the town to deal with because obviously, it's not just the kids that may be having issues right now. It's families as a whole and our community as a whole. And that sounded like a wonderful idea to me, to remove it from the school system and put it in the town so that it can be dealt with on a townwide level. They're researching their resources and making all sorts of, they're assessing it and making decisions. So I thought we already voted against it. So I don't understand why there need to be another vote unless one of the people that voted against it decided that they wanted to vote it for.
If people would like to have a full discussion about the mental health today, I'll take, I will make a friendly amendment and revisit it to add mental health services to the agenda as opposed to a discussion about holding another meeting or rescheduling it. But right now, we're talking about the agenda and the agenda item. Do people want to have a conversation about this later in the agenda?
No, thank you.
Tracy Anderson, it sounds like that might, I could, I'm sorry, Herb. What did you say?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I would go along with that friendly amendment if, Michelle, if that's what you'd like to do. It sounds as if that might be where the discussion is going, rather than to set a date, but to have a discuss, you know, put it actually on this agenda to discuss now.
Michelle, what is it you want to discuss? Whether we have a special meeting or the, definitely what it is. It could be, could be anything.
But I was being respectful of the fact that you're the chair, Herb, and it was your decision as to cancel the last meeting. I thought maybe we didn't have a quorum, somebody was sick or something. So I just thought it was an offshoot that somebody missed rescheduling the meeting. So that's why I raised that agenda, was to put it up there. I want to have the conversation, whether it happens tonight at a special meeting or next month, we need to have it on the agenda. I don't know how much else is on this agenda, how much time those items are gonna take. I would be happy to put the scheduling on it at this meeting. I know you're very sensitive to adding big topic issues for discussion without having given public notice. Granted, this is old business. We have been discussing this for nine months. So it's not like it's new. It's not like we haven't heard from the public in 100 different ways. So I'm ready to have the conversation. We can chat with it.
We've already had a conversation. We've already been talking about it for, for weeks and months. And the decision, well, Donna mentioned the fact that, you know, that some time ago, it came up and, and it was voted down. And that's where, the way it stands. To keep bringing it back does not seem to be appropriate in that it has, it already is a decision of the board at that particular, particular time. It, the motion was made at that time. It failed. And traditionally, when a motion fails like that, that's the end of that particular topic. And until a new board is established, I guess. But to bring it back, to bring it back is, is probably not an appropriate thing to do in that the, the decision has already been rendered. And we bring it back and discussing it and spinning our wheels on the topic. And it's apparently probably not going anywhere because it has already been, been defeated. And unless someone that is in a position to bring it back, brings it back, then that's, that's the way it remains as far as the, the board is concerned. And, and to keep trying to bring it back, using various means of doing that is, you know, it takes a lot of time. We're taking a lot of our board time right now discussing whether we're going to put it on the agenda or discuss it or have a special meeting. And we could spend all night doing that.
If you would like to have a conversation about whether or not we, we should discuss it, that's a different question. I've, I've made a motion that we will move to reschedule that conversation. It's been seconded. I've not made my friendly amendment yet because I've not been convinced that that's really what the audience, you know, the other board members are interested in. I think that if we're gonna have that conversation, we should do so. And I will happily bring with me, either later today or at another time, all of my reasons as to why I believe that's incorrect. But I don't want to hijack this meeting by putting this up front. I'm gonna respect your process and add it to the agenda at the end. So I think we should move to a vote on adding Agenda 9B, which is rescheduling a discussion about mental health services.
If we put that at the end of the agenda, we'll be here all night. Okay, any other comments regarding the motion here, Tracy?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was just.
Oh, just moving, okay.
I didn't.
But Michelle, the issue has already been decided. That's why I don't understand why you want to, want to bring it back. The board has already decided that this, this issue has been taken care of by our vote. And unless someone brings it back by reconsideration of some kind, then your motion is really out of order.
So the, what I would like to say is, since you've brought this back up again, and even though I moved to a vote, you've ignored that and you've answered my question. As I wrote to you in August, I believe your interpretation is incorrect. I have gone outside of and commented and contacted other parliamentarians who do this as a living and train other parliamentarians on Robert's rules. I have a lot of backup to show you. I, I sent some of it to you in August. You granted us the future meeting to discuss it. We granted you time to discuss it so we could come to some consensus and answer questions. There were a lot of extraneous confusion around us. And we'd like to have some sense of unity so that people feel their questions are answered. My questions have been answered since February. So if people don't have additional questions, we can move to a vote right away and not waste any more time on this. But if you want to have a discussion about whether or not we can vote, let's reschedule a meeting about whether or not we can vote to talk about mental health services as part of 9B. I will share with the entire board all of my backup, all of my research that shows that yes, we can raise that question at every regular meeting. I've done my homework on this, Herb.
Oh, I'm sure you have.
Yeah.
I can see all those books in the background there. And, and Robert's Rules, you know. Well, I have, I have a couple of Robert's Rules too. And, and, excuse me, the fact still remains. And I, I know you're being persistent and I understand where you're coming from. But we did vote. We took a vote. The motion was, it was defeated. It went away. And now you're trying to bring it back. And in order to bring it back, you have to have someone in a position to reconsider. And I don't think that we have anyone on the board that wouldn't make a motion to reconsider the, the issue at this particular time. It won't be until, I assume, a new board is in place.
Elena and Elena have their hands up.
I can't see her. Elena, you?
Yes, I just want to make two points. I remember not that long ago, Michelle, when I was holding the book which you were just holding, you were very respectful to me. And you told me, please do not shake that room, that book in front of me. When I tried to point it, you chose totally to ignore what those Robert's Rules say because they were not in your interest. So at this point, I don't want to step on the conflict ground. But I really want just to remind you that we cannot use the law only when it works in our favor. And my second, my second point, in order to change the, the agenda, you will have to have two thirds in order to change the agenda on a regular meeting. So why do you fight for something when you do not have two thirds? I suggest, I strongly would suggest now to move on with the agenda because it looks really, there are lots of questions which need to be covered. Why do we have to spend time for it? And I would like to make quickly another point, that while I was on the board and we were in minority, there are three against four. There were many questions which we did not agree with, but we decided to concede. We, we agreed, we agreed with our defeat. We never went there, we never put the other members of the board in the position where you put us now. I consider it bullying from your side because the decision was taken. I'm sorry, that's how I feel. Even if I'm wrong, I apologize for that. I strongly apologize. But this is how I feel. I feel the decision was taken. And the fact that you changed the results of the election, and we do not have the majority on the board given to us by the town, and you want to use it, I'm sorry. I was quiet. I don't think this is time to be quiet. I would strongly urge everyone to move on with the agenda at this point. Thank you.
There's a vote on the table right now, though, that hasn't been voted on, a motion on the table.
What are you saying?
I'm saying, I'm saying a point, is that a point of order? There's a motion on the table.
No, it's not a point of order. I'll help you move the question.
I'll move the question.
Okay, the question, the question has been moved. There's a question as to whether the motion is appropriate or not. But I will, I will allow it at this time. Okay, so we'll vote. All those in favor of the question, raise a hand. Say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, apparently there are four. I don't know, everyone up there, Phil?
You have four, yep. Tracy, Michelle, Lauren answered, yes, yep.
Okay, those opposed?
Aye.
Donna, Elena, and Herb.
Herb, yeah, okay. The motion, as Elena pointed out, the motion needs, was it two thirds or something like that?
Correct.
We don't have it, so the motion fails. We're back to the regular motion. Back to the present to speak now, which is the next item on the agenda. We have any grandchildren?
If there's anybody on camera, I only see one person on camera. If there's anybody on the, Judy Three has her hand up. If you can unmute her, Catherine. Oh, she's all set. Judy, are you all set? I'm not sure. If you want to unmute her and let she can re-mute herself if she needs to. Judy, did you have anything to say?
Just a little bit of feedback. I'm actually working mornings in another municipality outside of the Eastern Highlands District as a contact tracer. And in the last few days, the numbers have exploded. And it's only gonna get worse. And what we're seeing are cases related to Halloween and they're young people. So I just kind of wanted to give you the feedback of probably what's coming. I saw that there was another case in Wellington, I believe, today. And there's another case at EL. And I heard that there are multiple dorms at Yukon now being quarantined. I understand that Phil and some, the nurses have a call tomorrow morning with BPH. I think you're gonna have some very intense conversations with them. And you just need to be prepared to stay on top of it on a daily basis. And I wish you guys all the best in doing that.
Thanks. And if you are not, if you're able to be on camera or you're on the phone, if you want to raise your hand. Michelle, what was the method for them to do it? You're gonna have to unmute, Michelle. Sorry. If you're on the phone, Michelle, what was the, the method for them to let us know? Do we have to unmute them?
So yes, you have to unmute them. They can raise their hand if they're on camera in the participant screen at the bottom.
It looks like.
Hand option.
Yeah, it looks like.
I don't see anyone on the phone.
It looks like, yeah, if everybody, everyone's on the computer. So if you want to raise your hand, wait one more minute. And if you don't know how to raise your hand, you just.
Raise your hand by going, opening the participants at the bottom of your screen and then scrolling down to the bottom of the participants in the lower right-hand corner, it'll say raise hand.
Herb, I think you are good to go.
Okay, there's no more person to speak. So we're down to the chairman's report. Well, I just want to say that the, the month of November is a time of Thanksgiving. We give thanks to our friends and our family and all we enjoy. And we give thanks this time of the year and gratitude for most of our, what we have. But this year is just a little different. And COVID-19 pandemic has changed the conversation, really. Yet while the pandemic has changed our things and our confidence in many of the longstanding social norms and institutions. I'm so proud to say, really, that in spite of all of our differences and all of that, London Public Schools has, has maintained a solid footing throughout the, the pandemic. And we have a mandate to, to continue our mission, which is to provide the best quality education that we possibly can for, and services for our students. And we should be very thankful that this has been accomplished through the cooperation efforts, corporate efforts, the professionalism, perseverance, and especially the innovation of not only our Board of Education, but also the administration, the staff, been on the firing line on this thing, on the pandemic, our students who have cooperated wonderfully and apparent parental support and also members of the community. And as one of our speakers, speakers said today, the pandemic is still there, it's around us. And it's creeping around us. It's, we're fortunate that Wellington does not have as many cases as other communities. And as, as long as we persevere, we'll keep our students safe and provide them with a quality education. I just want to say that because I think it's, it is important to, especially for those who are working on the firing lines on this issue. Phil, do you have any, next item on the agenda is the communication. Do you have anything at all? I believe I have, I have one letter that I'm not going to read, I'm just going to have it put in the minutes. It's from George, who spoke at our previous meeting. And he, most of the things in the letter are almost the same issue. So I, Phil, you might have a copy of that, so.
We'll put it in.
Yes, just put it in the minutes.
I knew you were gonna say it, so that's why I said no.
Okay, okay, okay. We're down to the superintendent. And we're ready for you. And you have quite, quite a few things.
I'll fire through pretty quick. So the first item on there is the staff resignation and hiring. We received a resignation from Becky Muldoon, who is our HMS Health Teacher. She's half-time. She's gonna be moving on to work. She's got, has her own business and just has determined it's a, it's a good time to do that. So we just wish her a successful future. We actually hired a Spanish teacher, Dr. Joanie Alvarado, and is coming to us from Hartford Public Schools. Experienced educator, she's gonna be, be working at Hall School. We look forward to her arrival. She's gonna be starting the second quarter, which is next week. And so we've built that back into the schedule. So we're excited to have her on board. The enrollment update. We currently have 397 students in the district. I will say that we actually continue to see the ebb and flow of students in and out, whether remote or, or not. And we also see students moving in, which is, is, you know, I think there's still people moving into Wellington and into Connecticut general. We have 203, 203 students at Center School. And we have 165 that are learning on campus. And we have 38 remote learners at Center. And then we have 194 at Hall with 148 students that are on campus and 46 that are learning remotely. I will tell you that on Election Day, Hall School, the school was closed for students. They had a remote learning day, and it was highly successful. It went well. There's a couple hiccups, but overall, we're still collecting the data about assignments and to see what the attendance looked like that day. But overall, kids logged in, they were there. It seemed to work very well. So it was a different experience. So it was a different experience than when we closed the doors on March 13th last year, I'll tell you that much. Any questions on the enrollment update? Keep rolling. Item C, Wellington Emergency Communications Task Force Meeting Update. The task force again met on October 21st. And we had a presentation by a representative for the communications products called Code Red. It's the first company that's come through to present a product to us. We're going to have another meeting on a separate product, products coming up. There's been no decisions or anything, so nothing more to report than we just have seen the presentation from this, this one company. And again, this emergency communications task force is, is a result of the incident that happened last spring in Wellington and trying to identify a communications method for the town that would be efficient and appropriate. Item D, the Center School and Hall School Roof Project Update. You had asked me to get some information about an owner's project manager. And I had, I contacted two different places. I was informed that the cost to hire what's called an owner's project manager would be approximately $30,000 for our project. If the project, if the job was put out to bid, and job meaning the, you can actually put out an owner's product, project manager out to bid through an RFP, a Request for Proposals. If you do that, you can include that cost in your application to the state for reimbursement. Interestingly enough, through this process and talking to two different folks, I spoke with a member of Department Administrative Services. They're the group that administers the grants. And they stated that a significant number of roof projects, full roof, you know, tear off and reinstall in the last five to seven years are including photovoltaic solar panels. And the second person I talked to said the same thing. And they quite frankly said, if you don't consider this in your project, you're missing the boat. And the reason they said that is that the payoff that they're seeing and the energy credits that you're getting back within five to seven years is significant. And Herb, I'm sure as a member of the Region 19 Board, you just went through this. Region 19 replaced their roof. They put out their roof to bid and then said, we want to add in the the solar because they realized it was basically going to pay for itself in a short period of time. And if it's the time to do that. So there's, you know, a couple of things for the board to consider, but I need some direction. I figured I'd pass along the information about the solar panels. It's not within our plan right now. It's something that if you wanted me to look into, to add for into the capital improvement planning process, which we'll review next month, I could do that. But you need to give me some guidance about whether the board wants me to put out an RFP for an owner's, owner's project manager, or you would like me to just complete the process for the roof project. Herb, Elena has her hand up.
Elena?
I'm sorry for interrupting. I just have a question about that roof. It sounds so attractive what you just said about solar panels. But can you give us, at least, we understand you cannot give us exact numbers, but just to have an idea of how much it will increase the price?
I have no concept of that, Elaine. I did not research at all. I'm sure we could figure out by the square footage. And we'd have to, you'd have to, you know, change what, probably an additional piece to town meeting because you already had a town meeting for a certain number. But again, I think that's, and I would be glad to, even though the superintendent has changed in Region 19, there, I know that they have information there that we could gather just to get a sense of, you know, cost per square foot. What are we looking at? And, and, you know, some actual payoffs. But they, you know, DAS as well as another, and I don't want to say who, because they would be someone that could potentially bid on this project. Both said, you should really consider solar panels for, for if you are doing re-roofs at both schools.
It sounds like a really good idea. I know that at E O Smith, their job is pretty well completed. And it's working on really great. Most of the roofs at E O Smith were, were flat, I remember. So they, they put quite a few of them up there. It was quite a, quite a monstrous task, but it's pretty well complete. As far as we're concerned, Center School's flat roof, right? Most of it.
The majority of Hall is as well.
Really, except over the library or the library section.
Just that peak, yes, correct.
Yeah, over the science section, that new section is, is flat too.
Correct.
So it might be worthwhile looking into it.
Donna has her hand up, Herb, and so does, I believe, Ann.
Okay, okay. Donna, you're not on my screen, but go ahead. You grab the floor.
Thank you. Couple, couple of things, Phil. If you're going to be looking into the solar panels, please include checking with the fire department. A couple of years ago, I had a lengthy discussion with somebody who works at a fire department in Connecticut. And the policy was, since there were, there was no way to turn off the solar panel electric. If there was a fire, they just let the building burn, which is not what we would want to have happen, not only to our building, but, you know, to our, the danger to the community. And the other thing is, at the end of the life of the solar panel, because they do have a limited life, what is the cost to dispose of them? Because that could be quite prohibitive. And I haven't looked into that recently, so I can't even, you know, give you a reasonable guess.
The other thing too is, is if the roof itself needs repair and you have solar panels all over the roof, what, what do you do in a case like that? You have to remove the solar panels?
I think they have a similar life, Herb. I think the, this life of a solar panels is similar to the roof about 20 years. But that's a good question. I mean, I have literally done zero research on this. I just wanted to share the information and see if it was something that, you know, you want to consider. You want to see if it's, it's put on CIP. You know, obviously, that's, that's an additional piece. Ann had her hand up to Herb.
Go ahead.
I, I have a question and a comment. My question, how much do we get reimbursed? What would we get reimbursed of that $30,000? Is it 100%? 65%?
So the last time I think we had looked at our reimbursement numbers, it was 55% for a new building in a 54 and 64.
Okay.
So you'd be looking at, I think, 64% of that number.
Okay, so we wouldn't get the total of the 30,000?
Correct.
Right. Um, my comment is, if down the road, we do decide to build a new school, perhaps we want to think about the use of these buildings. Be, you know, and whether it's worth putting the solar panels on at that time. Like if we won't be using Hall School, do we want to make that investment to that building? Just something to think about.
Yeah, I don't know. Elena has her hand up, Herb.
Elena, you have four.
Thank you. And I have another question to you, Phil. In order for us to complete the project this coming summer, as a summer to 2021, are we moving in according with the plan so it would take place in the summer 2021? Or we're late already?
No, not, we're not late already. You're looking at, they basically said January 1 was your, you should be getting going on this. I'm not going to wait on that if it's me. But I need to know if it's me or if it's, if, because if I'm going to put out an RFP for someone, obviously, that not slows the process down, but you, you want to make sure you give them that January 1 date, which means, so if we were going to put out a Request for Proposals, you know, we would say we want to do a roof project, just like we just did for the ventilators or the ERVs. And you would, you would get those proposals back. The finance committee would review those. And you would make an appointment. Now, the thing that you have to remember right now is that I don't know if that was built into the project, the cost of the roof. You could probably argue that it is because it's for, within that million dollars. But it didn't say, you know, they don't break down the cost of the roof. When they approved it at a town meeting, they didn't say, you know, $500,000 for this, $100,000 for this. They didn't do it that way. The question would be, what happens if you go above the amount, which we, you know, you could have gone without this owner's rep. You could go over the million or be under the million either way. It just, you know, it's the supply and demand. It's the cost of whatever products are at that time. And whatever your reimbursement rate is.
I'm sorry, as you mentioned towards the same question, you just mentioned, you need to know if it's you or we hire someone else. What do you expect from us? Do we have to take a decision on it? Or what's the process?
Yeah, so if you want me to, you know, you just need to, you've, and Elena, I'm going to say you because it's been you. If, if the board wants to make a vote to say, hey, we want to go out and, you know, do an RFP, you would get a real number. What is it going to cost to actually do this? You're going to get a real proposal. The number I've given you of 30,000 is a ballpark from an actual, you know, place. So we know it's around that number. If you put out a Request for Proposal, it doesn't mean you have to accept it. But at least you're going to get a real number. And then if you accept that, if you say, hey, the, the price is right. It came in at 27,000. We think it's worth it. That's up to the board. The board would then have to approve it. And we'd be probably racing to be able to do that at a December meeting. It'd be pretty close. But then you would basically approve it. And then at the December meeting, you know, we would say this, this firm is hired and off they would go. And they would basically take the reins. And you'd have a, you know, they, they would drive the ship per se from that point on. I would obviously still have, be heavily involved. But they would be, you know, doing the majority of the work and setting the meetings and things like that.
So you're planning to put it in our December agenda? That's how I understood it. That particular question was hiring that company?
Only, no, only if you, if you basically need to decide if you want to go that route. If you want me to put out an RFP this week, I would, I would need to write it. And I would need to put it out to the state agency and we would get bids. We would have a finance committee meeting. They would review it. And then the board would have to devote on it in December to determine if they wanted to hire a firm or not. But it's going to take you a minimum of four weeks for that process. So I'm saying I just need to know if it's me or not, so I can make sure I'm, I'm building into my work.
Any other comments relative to Phil's suggestion?
It's not even a suggestion. I just want to make sure you understand what your options are.
Michelle?
I believe last month when we were talking about this, it was not necessarily because Phil said explicitly, this is what I want to use money for. This is what I need to make this happen. It was suggested that, given all the other responsibilities, that it hadn't happened quickly enough. But we went over those dates and it just looked like it was the way things happened with, when COVID started and the timing of the administrative services deadlines, et cetera. So I would hesitate to use $30,000, you know, we're often nickel and diming this budget unless we felt we needed it. So I'd like to hear from you, Phil. Nice to have, very useful to have, like, where is this in your schedule of priorities? It kind of seems to me like $30,000 might go a long way to hiring a facilities manager for a whole year as opposed to just for one project.
So that's a pretty legitimate comment. And the reason why it's legitimate, I will tell you that just the amount of work, you know, we don't have a facilities director in town. Never mind for schools. And so it's a hat, it's a hat I wear. Is it the hat you want me to wear the prime, a lot of the time? So I'll give you two examples. So we just did an RFP for this, the ERV project. The amount of hours it takes to, you know, one, write the ERV, answer the questions, do the walkthrough, review the bids, things like that. Do the research, you know, to write the, the RFPs. That's just one. You are going to have probably to need an RFP for cameras, security cameras off of a grant. You're going to need an RFP, and this is this year. You're going to need an RFP for the heating units for the schools, because that's in the CIP list and that's, that was pushed off. We'll need an RFP for Memorial School for the front, which is not as bad for the painting. But the bigger jobs are the engineer jobs. When you start talking about an engineer job, it is a lot of work, especially when they're reimbursement based. The projects I just listed are not reimbursement based, meaning through DAS. The security cameras are reimbursable, but it's not necessarily through, through DAS. It's through the Homeland Security Grant. So it's just, it's a, I'm going to be really frank with you. And I'm going to share something that it's interesting that you said that, Michelle, because I've had this conversation with the First Select Woman that this is something that I think the amount of time, whether it's Public Works doing something, or it's her doing something or myself, you pay us a lot of money for results. And the amount of time we're spending on those types of projects is significant. And so, you know, it depends on where you want to put your, put your, your eggs. It's really what it comes down to. So do I have the ability to do the roof project? I do. Do I have the time to do it now? I will build it in for sure. Would I love to see someone take it over and drive that with the expertise because it's so comprehensive for the roof project with the grant process? That would be fantastic. But I'm not, you know, I understand the, the, you know, fiscal conservatism. I get that. And I'm the same way. If I, if I have the ability to do something, I'd like to do it, but it's, it's a lot of work.
And would that oversee the rest of the project through completion? Or is it only through the start of the project?
You write it, the RFP, how you want it. That's a really good question. You could write the RFP to say, get me to construction phase. You could say, get me to architect phase. You could say soup to nuts. My, the 30,000 is beginning, putting it out. And, you know, once you have an RFP and you hire this, this basically project person, you're hiring a firm and then they would have this from, they would be the ones to put out the RFP for an architect. And then once they hired an architect, they would still go work through you. Once they hired an architect, then they would do an RFP for construction company. They would then go through you and make that decision. And then they would oversee all of the construction, all of the grant process, the reimbursement, and they would close the project. So that 30,000 is the full beginning of project staff.
And what's the full of the roof? Like what percentage is that 30,000 of the full project cost?
I think, right now, the roof went in for just a touch over a million dollars.
So it's about 3%?
Prior to reimbursement. Tracy, I think had her hand up, Herb.
Sorry, I can't see.
That's okay. So then to clarify, the owner's project manager is, is assigned to one project. They could not do multiple projects. It was, it's part of one project at a time?
Correct. That's how they would bid on this. Right. That's how they bid on this. And that's the, why I brought this up with the First Select Woman is that, you know, the number of projects that we have in town that require the number of hours you really need to put into it, it's, it's significant. The roof project is, is not small alone. But it's something that, you know, if you look at the CIP plan and you look at the number of items that require reimbursement, it's, 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 you know, applying for grants and just think about what we've done with EMCOR as, as our preventative maintenance program. We know the number, age of our boilers. We know the age of all those things. Right now, we're collecting that data. And that's what a project, you know, that's what, if you hired a facilities director, that's what they would do. The facilities director would still consult with me over a roof project. But you would find someone with expertise in grant writing is, is how you would try and hire someone. But it's, you know, this is, we're not talking about a $50,000 job. This is, you know, administrative level pay. It's not cheap. Elena has her hand up again, Herb. Elena has her hand up.
Elena?
I'll be quick. I just want to understand the process. We shouldn't miss anything. Do you, do we have to take a decision, make a motion? So you would represent us some information next meeting for the voting? Or, or you just can, or we can just ask? Or, or you just can, or we can just ask you, please, please give us some, some information for the next meeting so we could vote if we choose to? How, where do we move from here? So we wouldn't miss another month?
Yeah, I think if you will, if you want to put out an RFP, I think the board needs to agree to that. You know, and it doesn't mean that you're going to do it. Let's be clear about that. If you agree that you want to see an, a request for proposals, you know, for, for this specific position of an owner's project manager, you would get proposals back that would be just for the roof project. You would review those at your December meeting and then that's really the latest, Elena, that you could be able to make a decision for me to be on time. If you decided at that point, we wanna hire this person, they're gonna have, be okay. If you just say, nope, we don't wanna hire this person, we want Phil to do it, I'm okay. But that's probably your latest, your next meeting is the latest point. I just need to know if you want me to do the RFP or if you just want me to do the, the job. Those are, that's the question.
So do we need to make a motion now or we can just ask you to provide it? How official it has to be?
That's up to Herb.
Yeah, I, I think we probably need a motion just to set the direction on this.
Yeah.
She has her hand up.
Elena?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to make a motion to ask Phil, Mr. Stevens, to provide us the information with options on different companies who could take over the roof project for our district.
Elena, if you want me to do an RFP for an owner's project manager, you should say that in your motion.
Yeah, well, let me try to say.
Just add at the end, you're, I think you're okay.
So, so what, so I, um, so.
Take your time, it's your motion.
Donna, or somebody.
I, Elena, it's okay. I think if you're just asking me to do the request for proposal.
Yes.
To get the numbers for an owner's project manager, just say, that's, cause I think that's what you're asking for.
Yes, I'd like to make a proportion, a motion to make a request for submitting the proposals from different companies on handling roof projects, roof project in our district. Did that, did it sound right this time? Sorry.
Uh, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Michelle seconded. Okay, are there any further questions regarding the motion?
I have a question. So right now, we're just talking about proposals. We're not saying that we will for sure hire someone to do this. Is that correct? We're at the proposal level?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there a difference, cause I'm not familiar with the terminology, is there a difference between an owner's project manager and a clerk of the works? Are they essentially the same thing?
It's a great question. They, they do, they're similar, but they're not exactly the same. There are small things that they do different. And so this is where we would talk, we could talk to, if I'm gonna put out that RFP, I'm gonna talk to, and, and I say owner's project manager because that's what DAS said, that's what you're looking for, that's what they told me. They didn't say clerk of the works, but there, there are several positions. Project manager is different than owner's project manager is different than a clerk of the works. So.
The duties are different, right?
What's that?
Their duties are different, they do.
Correct, correct.
So the owner's project manager would be the proper description of the individual that we would be looking for?
In my information gathering from DAS and another agency, that is correct. That is the answer that they said, that is the position you would be looking for. They would be directing everything from beginning to end if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. And, and the other thing which I, is related, based upon your discussions with Erica, is the town looking to hire somebody to deal with this because there's other buildings besides the school buildings that maybe we would end up sharing someone similar to some of the other services that kinda cross between the two, where it might be more cost effective to have somebody that we're sharing versus somebody just for this project?
That's correct. So when I went to the first select woman, the reason I went there is because I know she has the same thing here. So, you know, the example, just in the town office building here is when a new boiler had to go in, you know, she suddenly has to become an expert on a boiler and talk to the director of public works. And the director of public works, that's not his job. He's public works, he's not facilities. And so, you know, when you think about the longevity and the care of our town buildings, which includes schools, this would be a joint position, just like our business manager is a shared position. This, we would be looking at this from the perspective of, and to be quite honest, even if you were to hire, you know, owner, owner's project manager, it might be something you see in the budget in the future. And the reason why is because she has a need and so, so, so do I. You know, that facilities manager to know all of the details about the schools and the town office building, the public library, you know, when we start talking about changing filters and we talk, start talking about the old town hall, you know, the town is responsible for those buildings. And if you don't care for them in the beginning, you pay for them later on. Hopefully that answered your question.
Well, i- is that something that she's looking into soon?
We, it would be for next year's budget. We, we just had a really, and I'm probably spilling the beans for her conversation, we had a very raw conversation and it happened to come up tonight, that's why I'm sharing it. Again, I try to be transparent about these things. We had a raw conversation because of the number of projects and we were talking about upcoming CIP meetings and that's where that, that concept came up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Anne?
Oh, could, could the thirty thousand dollars that we get for this project be sort of applied toward the salary of that person?
We do not have the budget for it this year, Anne. We would be looking at presenting our budgets and, and again, this idea was really raw. We, we haven't, we haven't run our numbers for next year, we don't know what it's gonna look like. It was something that we've had a conversation about, but it would be something that we would put into twenty-one, twenty-two. And really, we, we would wanna lay out the projects and go, does it, does this make sense at this time and, and, you know, for the amount of, of work that needs to happen?
Well, if the work is gonna happen this summer, you know, within this year, this might be a good experiment to see how it works, you know, is.
Problem is, Anne, the issue is, it's the, they would be coming on board whenever, when the construction's hitting, hitting the ground. They wouldn't have done the, all the pre-work. And to be honest with you, once the construction company is on site.
Yeah. The hard work is finished. Yeah.
Yeah, might have some change orders, but for the most part, the work is done because DAS will not allow anybody on site until all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and they're saying, yep, go for it, you're on. And when you get that, that's when you know that it's, you're, you're in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this issue? Anyone wants the motion read back? If not, we'll move on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Absentions? Motion is passed. Okay. Phil, you're all settled?
Sorry about that long conversation. Thank you for the feedback. Item E in my report is the HMS and CES ventilation projects update. I shared this out with you, with you. This has taken a, kind of a left turn. The town did, the funds to address the ventilation project at Center and Hall were approved at town meeting on October twenty-ninth. Center School is slated to receive a new exhaust unit and that's gonna improve ventilation in the last two classrooms in the upper wing. They were in addition, they just didn't have anything, so that would be taken care of. It's, that's already in the works. The plan for Hall School, as you know, was much more complex and we were planning to install energy recovery ventilators. However, when we got the, and again, we put out an RFP for that, we did the bid, the walk-throughs, the bids that were submitted that came in were significantly higher than what we expected. I shared that with the, the finance committee of the board. And what I'll tell you is one of the individuals that came to the walkthrough declined to bid on, declined to bid on the project and basically said, you need an engineered solution. Your ERV project will solve the problem for a short period of time. They're individual units, it is a solution, but it's not the long-term and proper solution. And this person wrote a very nice letter to, to me sharing that and, and basically added that, he made a recommendation to instead add portable air purifiers with HEPA filters as a secondary solution. And the, the recommendation was supported by an epidemiologist that took that to the state, to Department of Public Health and the state epidemiologist. That person supported it and it, this is also a documented solution for, is an efficient solution for COVID-19 mitigation strategies from CDC. And there's a, a group called ASHRIDE, it's the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers, and they're the leading authorities on this. And they also, in, in recent articles, supported this. And I will tell you, these articles were published the last week of October. So it's new information, you know, when this, when this person made this recommendation, I went out and looked at it and, and shared that information with the, the board's finance committee on Friday night. They all agreed and the finance committee, if you want us to chime in here, you can, but we agreed that the, the proper solution was not to do the ERV project right now. It was gonna take a significantly longer period of time to even complete and to move forward with air purifiers, one air purifier for each of those classrooms at Hall School. The units are capable of, of cleaning fifteen hundred square feet and providing four air exchanges per hour, which is what we would have gotten on the ERVs. They have medical grade HEPA filters in them and, but long-term, we should be looking at some sort of engineered ventilation solution, talking about capital improvement projects in the west wing of Hall School. I will tell you that typically I would not jump on this without board approval, just because of this is a big change in project, but I did. And the reason I did is because when I called the company and said, what units do you have that you can get twelve of? And they laughed. And they said, we have, they have loads of models, but they don't have, they just are flooded with business right now. We had one choice, it happened to be a good choice, and so the order was placed, it was placed, it was canceled, it was placed again, and we now have confirmation that the order should be in this week, which is fantastic. It's a plug and go. So those, we will be able to put those HEPA filter, medical grade HEPA filters, air purifiers in those classrooms hopefully by the end of this week. So again, so typically I would ask for the board to vote on this. It was just a quirky situation where we needed to move, so they weren't sold out with all the cases popping right now. A lot of people with this new information are trying to get these. So I made a decision and I, I think the, the finance committee supported that, that we move forward and, and just to do it. So am I missing anything, finance committee?
No, I think, I think it covered everything fine, no. But it, this did have the approval of the finance committee and if necessary, we would have brought it to the board, but it was a matter of moving quickly and, but we have twelve of them and I guess they are due shortly.
Correct.
And the beauty of it, there's, they're a plug-in and you, you just put them, put them in there and install them and.
Correct.
It's not a project that ends up in the ceiling and digging through the walls and everything like that. So it's a, it's a quick solution to a real problem.
Right. And, and, and the price tag of fifteen thousand dollars total between the two center school projects and the hall school project as opposed to a hundred and thirty-five, and I'll be honest with you, the lowest bid for the ERV project was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, the highest came in at three hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, yeah, the, it's a big window and this is a lot more inexpensive. It's a, it's a, a proper use of these. We can still keep the windows open a crack and close them and feel comfortable that we can do that and not freeze a classroom out. Laura had her hand up, Herb.
You, you just answered, that's what I was gonna ask you.
I figured you were gonna ask, sorry.
I think, I think there's a warranty with these too, isn't there, a year or two?
Correct, yes. The filters are good for five years on these.
And they'll be maintained by the.
Five years.
So that's a long time for a filter, yes.
Yeah, we change ours like every month.
I was surprised. They're the only ones that has a five-year filter on it.
Yeah, amazing.
Okay, so I'll keep going then, thank you. Item F, clarinet donation to Hall School. This is a quickie, but wanted to share, we received a clarinet donation from Dr. James Knox. He's a retired UConn professor. This is a simple thing, but it's, it's, you know, great stuff like this in the community. The instrument was given to Tracy Canastrari, our band teacher. I will tell you, instruments, if you know anything about instruments, they are not cheap and it's in really good condition. And so she was excited to have it and she'll be cleaning it and, and we'll use it as a loner instrument if we need to, but it's, it's something that we just added to our, our inventory, which is great. So a huge thanks to Dr. Knox for the, the donation and she's very, this is Canastrari already has a thank you note written and, and in the mail. Item G, the COVID-19 school operations update. As Judy Threet mentioned, cases are on the rise, if you are following the news at all. We are seeing a significant number of cases. We've seen cases come up and willing to, not necessarily in the schools. We did have a case today, I spent the day contact tracing today. I will tell you, you know, I communicated out to you that we had a, a positive case today. Our mitigation factors in schools across the state are working and we know that because we're not seeing spread because of school, which means when there's a case in school, even if the student was in school, the masks are working, the social distancing is working, the hand washing is working. It's the outside of those seven hours and twenty minutes of school, what happens outside of school that we can't control, that's where the spread is occurring. So we've, you know, the staff has done a great job, I will tell you, they're tired, they're working extremely hard to do this work, but it's going well. The carports are currently being installed, it's a slow go. Public Works is doing the work. I will tell you, it's thousands, thousands of screws and Troy lets me know that every day. I think I'm gonna have to buy them some pizza, but I appreciate Public Works for their, for their efforts doing that work. Again, our staff is pushing their limits and, and things are going well. So we'll see how long we can stay open and, and keep people safe and healthy. I'm just, Catherine, sorry, I'm just making you the host again, cause I think you got booted. There you go. All right, election day, the usage of Hall School, it went very, very well. Our custodial crew received outstanding feedback from the election officials, so thanks to our custodial crew. They did a full cleaning of the gym after the, it was broken down, the place was broken down that night of the elections. Public Works, I was there the next morning, they removed the stuff immediately. All the items were cleaned, it was like, you know, you didn't miss a beat. I will tell you, it was really helpful to them to have a professional day before the election because they could set up earlier. But all the cleaning, all, you know, the breakdown went very, very well and, and just a big shout out to our, our, our cleaning crew at Hall School for their work and the great feedback from the election officials. Thanks to them.
Most of the people I spoke to liked it down there too. It was good parking, it was easy access, no stairs to climb or anything like that. And the lighting was much better than up at the town hall, it was really, really.
You are correct.
Superior, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it was, sorry, I think it was easier for people that have difficulty with stairs and things like that to get in and out. So I, I would, I would love it if they did it there all the time.
I think there was a little issue, Phil, with the, with the bathrooms. The, they were used, I think, by people coming in there and out of there.
Yeah.
They weren't fully supplied. If it's used next year, I think that's something that should. They weren't fully supplied. If it's used next year, I think that's something that should make sure and take care of it.
Okay. I did not hear that. I don't know how much use they got. So I would, you know, and that's really the election officials that would have to let us know that they are empty or not. But I know that, that, the guys that were working did check on those bathrooms. So I did not hear that.
No, and the cleanup, what exactly, what did they do in that gym today?
So all the disinfection, floor wash, you know, things like that. But it's really the disinfection of the surfaces. That's probably the most important. Obviously, all the ventilation was on anyways, but the, the disinfection of those bathrooms of any of the doorknobs, you know, any, any touch surfaces there, that's what they spent their time on.
We did that.
Yes.
With a lot of people, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. And, and because we had, you know, they didn't have students in the building the day before. So they were able to catch up on their work and they didn't have students in the building the day of the election either. So they were okay on time to be able to do those things.
That's good.
It didn't hurt our, our student abilities. Can I move on? All right. Update on the school committees. I just wanted to share what committees, we're getting ready to call a couple of school-based committees. This is not necessarily board level. It's, it's the school-based committees that we're working on. The teacher evaluation committee is going to be meeting and they're going to be working on finalizing a new teacher evaluation plan with a new rubric that will be submitted to the State Department of Education for approval for next year. Our social emotional learning committee is, are you guys getting an echo?
Yeah.
Is it, I don't know if it's me. I don't know if, we'll see if it continues. The social emotional learning committee is evaluating programs for curriculum. So they're going to be meeting. And then our portion of the graduate committee is meeting to, to finalize their work and get some feedback on the traits that they identified. Again, all these committees are, are doing the work of moving the district forward. And they're aligned with our mission statement and the things that we're working on. So that's my update for today.
Okay. There's nothing else on the report? If not, if not, we're ready to move on to the financial report. 2020 to 2021, which is a budget update and it's attachment number one. Have the program received this in that packet?
And so I tried to give you, I did the same thing I, I did last meeting because I thought was helpful. And put the notes in there. I hope that was helpful for you. And I tried to put us, give you a sense of, is there a shortfall? Is there, you know, a quote-unquote surplus at this point? If you just, you know, if you want me to fire through these items, I'm, I'm glad to do that. You know, there's a shortfall in maintenance just because of supplies, because of COVID. And we have a 0.5 paraprofessional in both buildings, center school and hall school. That is COVID-related as well. There's a salary surplus a little bit at center, but not at hall. We are going to see some sports savings. I haven't announced yet, but DPH just put out some guidance about basketball. With a number of cases going up, I just don't see us having a basketball season this year at hall. It creates a new cohort. And so that, there's going to be some savings there for program two. In program three, we, again, we don't see those bills until the end of the year. Or, you know, but we'll see some savings in summer school. And that summer school is from the past summer school from July 1 on. And the, the support program wealth, we're just not going to be able to run it the way we typically would run it because of COVID. So there will be some savings there. The program four, there's some savings in sports transportation. Program five, scratch that out. Again, there's some supplies and it's, again, it's masks, it's gloves, it's a shortfall there. Those shortfalls, you know, we'll, we'll get to the grants in a minute, but we, I think they're going to come back. Program six, we just have not encumbered all the stipend positions yet. They're going through those. And the stipends are like team leaders, sports, certain supervisory positions, curriculum stipends. They're like $800, $1,000, $1,500. We had done them all, encumbered them all because we weren't sure if they were all going to be filled because of COVID. So it's a quirky time. All of the workshops are in this account. So that's why you see money in there too, is, is people participate in workshops. There are virtual workshops that people are doing now. Program seven, all the monies have, have been encumbered. Program eight is the custodial supply line. That's the supplies. There's about a $20,000 shortfall there, but we see some savings in overtime and summer hours that were not used. If we have a really bad winter where they have to come in over, on the weekends or work overtime, some of that money will obviously be used, but there's, there's, right now, there's a surplus. Program nine, the subscriptions that we have are, have not all come due yet. And that's about $21,000 of that money will be used for those subscriptions. Things like Microsoft licensing that we have to do, things like that. And then the fringe, the substitute lines are reduced throughout the year. That's about 45,000 of that amount of money. And Donna is in the process of truing up. And when we say truing up a line, as people, you know, leave the district or people enter the district, staff members, and some people took insurance, some people didn't. They just encumbered all. And then what they're going to do now is she's, and I, this is the note on the bottom, that the business manager and I will have a forecast of the remainder of 2021 for you. All of the grant money will have been applied, hopefully by December. And I say hopefully because some of that's the CRF, the coronavirus relief funds. Hopefully that will be applied and you'll see kind of what will we look like from December on. Because all these negatives are probably going to come back because of the grants. And the same thing, like the title grant has not necessarily been all applied. The insurance will be updated. We're going to be able to give you a good forecast, which typically, we don't forecast out this early, but we need to this year because of COVID, because of the expenses. So questions on what you see here on this, Donna has her hand up her.
Donna?
Just one thing. You had mentioned about the custodians and, and maybe overtime if it, if there's on the weekends, if we have a bad winter. I hope the acorns in my backyard are not telling me the same thing they told me the winter that we got the eight feet of snow. But they're there. Would it be possible instead of, excuse me, instead of having them come in for overtime on the weekends, if there is a significant snowfall, to shift the time and have the kids do the distance learning so that we don't have to incur the overtime, you know, it'd still get cleaned up? I don't know if that's an option or not.
So we're going to talk about snow days and remote learning at our December meeting. We got some feedback about that. But it's something that, you know, we could consider that, that I will tell you that just generally the feedback about remote learning on snow days from staff was, please, just let, give us the day. We would appreciate that. And the feedback from parents actually was, 50% of the parents said, just let it be. Let's just make up the snow days and once we hit a certain number, then consider it. But, you know, we can, we can bring that up for sure, Donna. It depends on if it's public safety and the building's being used or not. And whether they come in. But I will tell you, they are very reasonable for what they do and they, they, it has to be approved by me. And they've always been very reasonable and I appreciate that. Yeah, it's a, it's a thought. And the other?
On item six, on item six, on the curriculum and staff development.
Yep.
The stipend positions will cut into that $50,000 balance, or is that encumbered already?
Some of the stipends are encumbered, but not all. And so we're going through all the stipends and that's why we're trying to do it for the year and project out what, you know, like team leaders, they're, they're happening. We know those are in, they're, they're already encumbered. But there's a couple that were not encumbered that we are going to make some decisions on. And, and it's, a lot of it's around sports. You know, some of this is around, I've, I've approved some clubs for Jason Phillips. And Jason is one of those guys that does, you know, when he does the shows at the, you know, the, the big shows, that's a stipend. Well, if you can't do a big show in person and he's doing it as a club, I've approved some smaller stipends that are clubs. And they're, it's a little bit different. So some of those will not be there because he can't do them, but he and I have already spoken, I've already approved, he's the only person in the district right now that's running four clubs this year so far. And he's going to be doing shows, he's going to be doing them through Zoom. He's going to come up with some creative ways to do it. I appreciate that. And to be honest with you, if you could fit in more, I'll approve more. Because it's, it's, it's important for our kids.
How are you handling the professional development? Is that online or is it?
Correct.
In person?
I have not seen a single in-person professional development offer. The majority of them right now are through Zoom or a similar platform. And, you know, I know that, you know, the, the RASKS, EastCon, Cracked Learn, they are still providing professional development. They're trying to keep the costs low. And they're out there. I will tell you, our staff is, is surviving right now. I hate to use the word surviving. Their professional development right now has to pertain to what they're doing right now in, in a, a COVID learning environment. Whether it's using technology to engage students, whether it's, you know, how do I manage the, the distance learners at the same time I'm, you know, managing students in my classroom? Those are the types of professional development people are looking for right now.
Okay. Good. Okay. Anyone else have a comment, question? I guess everyone's all set on that, Phil. We can move on, I guess. You don't have any add-ons there, do you? Any additional things?
No, the reopening expenses is next. Catherine, can you allow me to share my screen, please?
Moving down the financial report now. Item A.
I just did that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, but B, the COVID-19 reopening expenses.
So I sent you this out, I think, like a whatever it was a week ago. It's already outdated because of the ventilation project. So I'm just going to share my screen, give you a sense of the changes. It's actually for the better because the ventilation project that we were going to do was significantly more expensive. This is, gives you a snapshot. And to be honest with you, I matched this to our grants. And so we can move money very fast from grants. When the grants come in, we can actually reapply that money specifically using these categories. So the staffing that you see there, the utility staff salary and insurance, that's projected out through December that we have, and the use of a paraprofessional for a teacher that's teaching remotely, you see the total there. That's a complete offset in a grant. The carports and tents total is there. That is a complete offset in a grant. The ventilation project, which was, that you was, was, that number was significantly higher, is down a lot now. And 36,000 is for all of our ventilation projects total. I don't anticipate that number changing at all. That's entirely covered by grants. Custodial, all the supplies entirely covered by grants, but that grant only takes us through December. So you can't have things beyond that. So it takes us through December. But it's covered. That money's covered. Electronics, small number, but it's covered by the grants. Unfortunately, a lot of items are, that electronic based are not covered by grants, but that, those items are. Protective equipment, additional items, those are covered by grants. The school supplies, we believe are going to be covered 100% by grants because those are above and beyond. And then the professional development is going to be 100% covered by grants. So that $205,000 that you see that are, are reopening costs with a projection through December, might I add, that's what it's going to cost us. And I'll share, I can share this update with you again. I put a new date on it. We are going to have to decide in December if you want to do a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the WESS union to extend the, the utility workers. That would require putting them into that union. Legally, that's what we would have to do. And I'm going to tell you right now, we remain open. That is exactly my recommendation and that cost is not seen here. The good thing is, is we have about $260,000 in grants. And so far we are at 205. So that's us today. You know, we'll need to order more chemicals, more, you know, more hand sanitizer. But we, this puts us in a really good shape and why I said all those numbers in the budget that I just presented. We're going to have a good snapshot for you in December of, of, of a financial projection to get us through the remainder of the year. So I wanted to share this.
Donna?
I have a question. Um, Phil, when you talk about the grants, are these federal grants or state grants?
So everything came federal and they're, they end up being pushed through the state. It's the, that's what you see in the bottom here. So this right here, the Essar grant was the first one that came out. There's a lot more, that's already approved. But we have flexibility, a lot more flexibility in that grant and we can adjust what we're using that money for. The Corona Relief Funds are a lot stricter. And we just received the submission back from the state. They wanted us to adjust something, which actually worked out great because I had to change the ventilation project anyways, but that's a federal grant. I don't know, and I'm sure everyone's heard about the HEROES Act. I don't know if we're going to see more money Ju, January 1 or not. But the fact that we, if we can recover all this will help significantly. So.
One of the reasons I ask is I just spoke to a friend and it's a different state. So they're in New Hampshire. And she said that the, that those Plexiglas shields, their, their rules are a little different. If they have shields, they don't have to wear masks. They wear the masks to, to their spot and anytime they leave, but they can take them off if they're at their spot with the shield. And that their $500,000 worth of desk shields and cafeteria shields were declined because it was considered office furniture or office equipment. And so that's why I asked the question.
So FEMA, FEMA funds in the beginning, and I didn't, didn't even list FEMA here. Those funds, we were kind of told in the, in the, in the beginning of this that, hey, just apply it to FEMA. It's going to be, it's going to be accepted. And a ton of it was declined. We, it just, it was unbelievable. And so a lot of districts didn't get anything from FEMA. And so that we're in good shape here, which helps us. And I will tell you, that might be one of the things that they applied for through FEMA and were declined.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I can't see everybody, so if.
No, I can't either. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on COVID-19 expenditures? Okay. So you'll have another update on this, Phil, next week or next month?
Yep. We'll keep that going. And we'll give you, along with that, we'll give you the projection as the grants are applied.
Okay. Moving on to item B. Under.
C.
C, C, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. So the student activity funds, I, I don't think we've ever had a quirkier year in student activity funds and it's really because of COVID. And so I'm looking at the student activity fund and it actually doesn't even say Hall School on the top of it. But it's the one that has $6,968.86 in it. There was just a, and I appreciated Carla put the, the notes on the bottom because it really clarified for me. I had questions when I got it and I said, put the notes on the bottom. This is the year that we need them. So when you see a negative number of like negative $645, that's things like, hey, a charter bus was booked for a field trip and we weren't allowed to go. And it's taken super a long time for those checks to come back in. So those things, and they happened after August 31st. So they ended the year on somebody's things on negative. But they're going to be reapplied in the new year because it's after August 31st. So there's three items on there. You're going to see the negative 645 for field trips that they got a $545 back of the bus. You're going to see the grade eight field trips and graduation. The majority of that is the graduation ceremony items. That's going to be reapplied. That money will be leveled out because of the Essar grant. It'll be used, grant funds for that. And that's like the graduation signs that we had, promotion signs, things like that. And then the negative for the library book fair, they received a check for $592. So they're going to have a balance of $6.51. So those numbers are all coming back. But, you know, same thing with the Great East Music Festival, they're sending money back. All of those agencies have just been overwhelmed with reimbursements. So it's been slow. But you can get, it gives you a sense of what's in the Hall Student Activity Account. And same thing with Center. And same thing with Center. They had similar things, and they look like they have some money in in accounts that might look strange, except in a COVID year. So when they get money from the PTA for assemblies and it's not spent, they have money there. Same thing with field trips. They ended up with the the money from the PTA that they didn't get, it didn't get used because the kids didn't go on field trips. Center School, I will tell you, has several donation lines. There's a family that has donated money from a golf tournament. There's, there's been just different donations for different things that have come in, and so they have a couple lines that are around, whether it's memorials or donations. They're in those. So the thing I want to end with about the student activity funds, I will tell you that these are reasonable amounts. These these accounts are audited. And what I'll also tell you is that high schools tend to have like a hundred thousand dollars or more in these student activity accounts. These numbers where they're at are reasonable. They're using the funds. They're managed well. They know they have to be applied to students. There's only a couple quirky items in here, like the BSB is Besby. It's the the money that comes in from the soda machines. And that's used for, you know, anything student related. So, you know, overall, these numbers are are reasonable. And we track these, and if they're going to spend money on these accounts, they they usually contact me and talk to me about them. Outside of our budget. So any questions on the student activity accounts?
I don't have any comment, except that I liked the spreadsheet that you provided us with, Phil.
Those are the ladies in the office. We we asked them to to try and make it straightforward and
Okay. We don't have anything else under financial report. We'll move down to item A, new business. Item A, approval of the minutes of October thirteenth. Attachment four. Got a copy of the minutes in your packet, I believe.
Move that we approved the minutes of October thirteenth.
Amy Shell has moved minutes. I have a second. And?
I second it.
Okay, it's moving second. Any comments or questions? If not, well, those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Okay, unanimous. Item B. The twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Wellington Public School calendar. That's attachment five.
So this is a, this is a real draft. I'm just going to say, if I wanted to say drafty, this is very, very drafty. I wanted to make sure before we, I went to Region Nineteen, that you didn't weren't looking to make sweeping changes or, you know, I would like to follow this year's calendar for the most part, except for the COVID additional professional development days on the front side. We work with Region Nineteen, Mansfield, Ashford, and Columbia to align certain days, including April vacation. And again, this is a first draft. Basically, what I'm looking for from you is just to get a sense of, should we apply the same logic that we applied last year? And I can kind of give you some of those examples. You know, the three professional development days prior to start of school would be one, two, three. You'd start school after Labor Day with students, which would be the seventh. You would have the same days off in October with that Friday, early release on the eighth, a holiday on the Monday, and the staff development on Tuesday. You'd have the same conference schedule and early releases for Thanksgiving in November. You'd have the same basically holiday break in December. I will tell you, some districts are looking at, because it's a short year, short span for the holiday break next year, they're looking at giving two weeks. I'm not recommending that. That's up to the board, though. And that's, it's short because of January first being on a weekend. Same holiday in January, same holiday in February, wide-open March. April vacation is not highlighted on your calendar right now, but we're looking at the week of the eighteenth. What we're waiting on is they're doing SATs. We're being told for twenty-one, twenty-two online. And we're trying to figure out when, because you don't want to book it on the vacation week. So you're going to see a big, a whole bunch of districts deciding the same week because of that. So we're we're waiting on that, even though our students don't take SATs. It's the high school. We try to align with Region Nineteen, and that's why it's not on there. We're assuming it's going to either be the week of the eleventh or the eighteenth, but the State Department of that has not posted that yet, and that was as information as as recent as yesterday. May would still have the same holiday, and we would just do that this, last day of school would be an early release day, and we'd build in the snow days for the remainder of the year. But I wanted to make sure you didn't have any significant changes before I had a good conversation, more comprehensive conversation with Region Nineteen and Mansfield, Ashford, and Columbia. Any feedback on that is appreciated.
Phil, you said it was an early year. How early? Assuming no snow, what's the, what would the end date be?
I did not count the number of days, but based upon this year, it's, I think, earlier than the fifteenth. But we didn't, we didn't do the numbers yet because I didn't want to count until that case, but I feel, always feel like, Michelle, the year I count the days too early is the year we have fifteen snow days, though.
Well, don't jinx us.
So are you okay with the same concept of what was applied this year outside of the change in schedule because of COVID?
I would be open to matching whatever is happening at EO and Ashford and Mansfield. But I would be flexible on whether the twenty-third or the December twenty-second is the half-day. I agree with the not two weeks, but quite honestly, you and I know that that's not going to be a full week anyway. So.
Yes, Laura?
I'm just wondering what the rationale was with the districts that were thinking of taking two weeks.
Because it's the traditionally, when January first falls on a weekday, you just get an extra day or two in there. And so they're looking to provide, you know, a reasonable vacation. That's really what they're trying to provide. And not everyone is doing that, but it's, it's, you know, some of the districts that, and I'll tell you, like Woodstock Academy is one of them, I know, just off the top of my head. But they have students, international students that go home. So they were trying to provide some more time, but not every district is doing that, but there are some that are talking about it, and that's why I just, I shared as information.
All right, was was Mansfield, Ashford, or District Nineteen thinking?
To my knowledge, no. They may be interested in doing a twenty-second type situation, but because our contracts don't exactly align either for the number of professional development days, number of teacher days, you know, we're not exactly the same, but we try to be consistent as much as we can. But, you know, you could approve something that was slightly different and not impact a great deal. So can I come back with in December with a a more solidified calendar? If that works for you?
Yeah, sounds okay with me. How's the rest of the board feel?
Fine with that.
Yep. You too, I'm okay with that. I liked Michelle's idea about the twenty-second. I know airfares tend to be cheaper on a Wednesday. So families want to get away. You know, they may pull their kid out anyway, so if it's especially since there's, it's shortened to begin with because of how the days fall.
And the excitement that week is, let's just say it's pretty high. So I think teachers would greatly also appreciate that.
Next month, we're also going to have to do our calendar for twenty-twenty-one.
Yep, correct.
I think EO Smith has the calendar, amended calendar on their agenda for this this evening's meeting.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's a rescheduled meeting.
For this year's?
Twenty, 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 twenty-one.
Yep, that's next for us.
Yeah.
Item agenda for us, really.
Okay. All those in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
We voting?
We don't have, we don't have a motion.
I thought we had voted on it already. Okay, moving on to the early dismissal proposal.
Correct. So twenty-twenty-one, the early dismissal proposal through through January is what it says, and and after consideration further, I'd actually propose this through February. We distributed a questionnaire to staff and parents to gather some feedback regarding two items. One was to identify the impact of implementing early release days on Wednesdays from December through February. And I'm going to propose that the board modify the the current twenty-twenty-one calendar to implement those early dismissal days, starting on the first Wednesday in December, and reevaluate the concept at their February meeting to see if you wanted to continue on. And so why am I proposing that now? It's a, it's a weird time. Well, it's a weird year. I will tell you that there's a lot of districts that are already doing this. They have early dismissals built in one day per week. And so what happens is, you know, when we have a, it counts as a school day. Students, you know, leave their buildings at twelve o'clock, one o'clock, and the staff has the remainder of the day to do two things. One is connect with remote learners. And two is to take the time to do all of the extra stuff that they need to do. The data that we had, the staff data, because I polled them as well, it was overwhelming. They supported this concept a hundred percent. And the poll that we gave the parents, we had a hundred and sixty-six parents respond. Seventy-four percent supported the change, which is actually really high. I thought that was much higher than I was expecting. Seventy-four percent said they would support early release days on Wednesdays. Twelve percent said maybe. And the twelve percent, honestly, that were in the maybe category, said, you know, we'd like to be in school, but we understand if the teachers need this time to to work with remote learners and do the extra planning. And then fourteen percent said no, they didn't support the change, and maybe because of childcare or jobs. It was a smaller number. I will be honest with you, I don't think I've ever seen in all my years as a teacher and as an educator, I've never seen staff, and this is not a Wellington issue. It's a, it's a national issue. I've never seen staff so stressed. The amount of work that they're doing and the changes that they've made, providing this time for them to do, you know, the additional time to connect with remote learners, the additional time to complete the other rigorous tasks that they need to do. You know, because they're balancing on-campus learners right now and remote learners. And it's a lot of work, it's a lot of time. And they're looking for more time to connect with those learners. And they're also looking for more time to record lessons and and do the work they need to do. There are a significant number of districts that already have this. You know, whether it's Wednesday or a different day, Mansfield is doing it, Canterbury, Lebanon, Thompson, Ellington, Eastford, Tallent. It's a long list. There are some districts, Region Nineteen is one of them, where everybody's just remote on Wednesdays, and it's a short day. So all students, they have a shortened remote day. We'll say EO Smith would be like a seven-thirty to noonish. And then for the remainder of the day, the teachers have this time at the end of the day. And at EO Smith, the way they're doing it is they're only doing it, it's like office hours entirely on Wednesdays. So they're not even running necessarily a full academic schedule on Wednesdays, and there are other districts that are doing that. So Columbia, Bolton, Stafford, Region Nineteen. This is not new. I'm not reinventing the wheel. What I'm trying to do is alleviate the strain on our staff. And my concern is, at some point, you know, stress relief leads to illness. I'm worried our staff, some of our staff members will get sick, and without our staff members, we don't stay open. I do think this will help alleviate some of that challenge. I will tell you, my administrative team supports this a hundred percent. The union supports this a hundred percent. And so we're asking the board to make a decision to basically allow, give a month's notice about, then make a change in the calendar, make every Wednesday an early dismissal day from December through February. I would bring you back data and information to let you know if I'm recommending us to continue that process, bless you, beyond February. If we go remote, it, this kind of goes out the window because our, we have a shortened day already. You know, because of our remote schedules. But that's our recommendation to the board. Michelle has a question.
Phil, you can probably guess what I'm going to ask.
Childcare.
Childcare. Where are they going to go? Their parents are working.
That was the way we worded the question, Michelle. The question was worded, would you be able to manage this if the if the change was made? And that's what the percent, you know, a large percentage, I mean, when we start talking about eighty-six percent saying that, look, we believe this is manageable, and that's why it's maybe your yes, that's a huge number for us. There were a couple that were childcare issues. And not necessarily that they couldn't get it, it was the additional cost of the childcare. There was some that just basically said, look, I, I, we both work full days. And we fully understand that this is going to be a challenge for some families. We we understand that. But I will also tell you that it's going to be a bigger challenge if we close because we don't have staff members. And that's kind of one of the ways I'm looking at this.
Donna?
Star Hill and Tallent has been very flexible and doing all kinds of programs for hybrid schools. You may be able, may be able to speak to them and work out something where you could even send a busload of kids over and and have them spend their afternoon there and maybe offer that as an option for the parents.
Yeah, and we know Star Hill is actually offering, and they created this program for students that were in a hybrid model. And so, you know, when they go to school for two days, they're in their physical buildings, and then basically three days, they're they're not, they're remote learners. Star Hill is actually helping those kids log in and doing the work, from what I understand. Again, there's a cost to families, there's a, you have to register for it.
But it would be, it would be a solution, you know, with a cost, but a solution.
Correct.
My biggest fear is that for the ten kids who are eight, nine, and ten, who can't afford that, that they're going to be home alone. And I'd rather have us have a plan in place ahead of time, whether it's finding a way for the town social services to offer scholarships to go to Star Hill. I don't want kids home alone unsupervised. Maybe we need babysitting services with high school students. Whatever the options are, we should be planning ahead for families' needs.
I like the idea about the scholarships, Michelle. That's a great idea.
Donna?
What one of, and this is a personal pet peeve, is every time the school, like when EO was doing their early close on a Monday, I was like, why can't they do a delayed opening so that people can sleep in, or a Friday afternoon, so you can do what you want and extend your weekend instead of these bizarre middle-of-the-week things? I think, you know, the middle-of-the-week stuff was always a nightmare for us. And I wasn't working full-time, so I would much rather see it either end than smack dab in the middle.
The reason they were looking at the Fridays, oh, sorry, the Wednesdays, I only know of one district that's doing a Friday. And I do know of, not Portland, what's another? There's one district that is doing, and every single day, they do a delayed opening. They do it every single day. It's working out for them. I think if you were going to do it every day, that would work. I think if, when you start having bad weather and you're delayed, what do you do? You lose the time because teachers can't get in that situation. The reason why they like Wednesdays, Donna, is for continuity. Thompson is doing Fridays, and they're actually tracking attendance. And the jury's still out there. They're trying to determine if they're losing more kids remote because of that, because it's on Friday. Whereas you get the continuity. So if I have to work with a a remote learner on a Wednesday, I'm going to see them the next day. And that's one of the reasons why.
Okay.
Tracy, you're, Tracy?
Yes. I was just going to say, too, that I feel like it gives, at least in the middle school level, because I have a high schooler, it gives time to catch up before you get to Friday. before you get to Friday when now they're four days behind. Instead, they're only two days of needing some help in the middle and it kind of gives a little bit of a mental break in the middle of the week for the teachers and the students. I get where you're coming from though, Donna, but. And I also was going to say, as far as someone said, you know, a plan to have kid, help kids have someone to take care of them, all of the colleges, you know, I know we're talking, there's rates are up, but if you had someone in your bubble who was a college student who was going to start becoming home right before Thanksgiving, there might be options for someone who could take care of your child while they're also studying and your kid is online doing, you know, or something like that. There might be people who are looking for a little extra money and could have a Wednesday afternoon to do that. It might be something we can reach out to.
Yeah, that's the pro of Wednesday too, to be honest with you, is because EOSmith, they're, they're not necessarily technically off that day. But if you're a student that don't, you don't need to go in for counseling services, or you don't need to go in to connect with a teacher or do any work, and you just have homework and you want to take a job, you can do that. And Michelle, that would be one of those groups that we could, I could definitely connect with Jenny from Social Services and make sure, you know, any family that identifies that need, put them in touch to make sure that they have a solution.
That would be great.
Okay, any other comments? Okay.
Something we could try for maybe December and January, like shorten the time period versus December through February?
Yeah.
Working or reassess it somehow?
It's a good question, Donna. And this is, the reason I said through February is, so we end up really having three, what we'll call three Wednesdays, four in December, is I don't know if it's going to be enough time to determine if it's going to work prior to your board meeting. You would only see it happen five times. And is that enough to make a decision? Which is why I said, don't worry. But that's honestly entirely up to you. If you, I would give you a report back either way about how it's going in January. But you could make a determination about, hey, let's, let's do this, you know, five times in December and it'd be one time in January before your meeting. So you'd have six, six times. And then make a determination as opposed to, I'd be looking at 10 times before you made a decision at your, your February board meeting.
Could we, would it be easier on families to theoretically plan it to February and then if you determine that this is just not working, end it earlier versus telling them it's only going to go through January and then extend it as far as planning and things like that go?
Yeah, that's up to the board. I, I think either way, it's just the number of sessions that you want to, you want to try it for, if you want to try it at all. You get to determine that because it's a change in the calendar.
I would think that we should go through to February. What families need more than anything is a plan. They need to have a sense of how long it'll go. Obviously, everything's unsettled. Who's to know whether or not the whole state wouldn't be shut down by February. We don't know how bad things are going to get. So better to have it for a longer period of time and then we can take a look at it at that point and we'll have a better sense of where we are with COVID, rather than stringing them along and a little more and a little more and a little more.
This may never happen. If you approved it and we went remote December 1st, you would never even see the effects of it, honestly.
Let's think positively. We're going to keep going.
We are. We are for sure. We are. And that's why I'm proposing this. I think it's important. Our staff really needs it. And they're still working. They're still getting their hours. They're connecting with kids. It's important.
Could I make a motion?
Go ahead, Ann.
Could I make a motion that we have half-days beginning the first week in December till the last week in December of 2020? Yay, goodbye 2020, to the last the last week in February 2021.
I'll second that.
Hey, Tracy, seconded? Any comments? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye and raise your hand so we get them.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I can't see everyone, but I assume it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you. They will greatly appreciate that.
Okay, Phil. We're down to item D.
Yeah, I apologize. We put curriculum on there twice. Boy, we really botched this, this D. So the committee list that went out was wrong. It was one from February. And so you do exist, Laura. You do exist on these committees. So policy is Ann, Elena, and Herb with an alternate of Michelle. Finance is Herb, Michelle, and Donna with an alternate of Laura. And curriculum instruction is Laura, Ann, and Tracy with an alternate of Donna and Herb. And then the ad hocs were staff negotiations, Herb, Elena, and clubs, Michelle, Elena, Laura. Wellness was Laura, Tracy, Donna. Securities is Herb and Michelle. You're all on the facilities committee. And transportation was Michelle, Elena, and Herb. If we, just because it's very hard to schedule meetings right now, just because I know everyone's trying to do stuff and it's nuts for Brenda. Trying to, if we can schedule a finance, a curriculum, and a policy committee meeting, if we can just take a minute. Finance group, tell me when, we already have a next meeting set of, what was it, December 4th? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, and at 2 o'clock.
Shaq, one is done.
That two, 1 o'clock or 2?
2 P.M.
I had 2.
I had 2 P.M. as well.
Yeah.
Curriculum committee, Laura, Ann, and Tracy. We need a date. Any day of the week work better for you?
Thursday's no good for me.
Tracy, you're working, right?
Yes, but I'm available every afternoon. Except for next Tuesday, I have one more class for grad school. And then after that, I'm open.
Do you want to try like the first week of December?
First week of December. A second.
Be Tuesday the first.
It could be any, because it's a committee meeting. It could be any night. Could be 3 o'clock if you wanted. Laura and Tracy.
Yeah, so so, you know, Thursday I teach from 8:00 in the morning to 6:45 at night. Monday and Wednesday I have afternoon classes. Tuesday I have a morning class. I'm open on Friday.
Do you want to do it Tuesday afternoon?
That works for me.
That works for me.
If we could be 3:30 or after just to get transportation home.
So Tuesday, the first, 3:30 is what we're thinking of?
Is Ann frozen or is she?
No, I'm good. I'm just letting them decide because I'm a little more flexible. So 3:30 works for me on that date.
Okay, that's good. Great.
Tell me again, December 1, 3:30?
Yes.
Thank you. And then policy committee, Ann, Elena, Herb. You want to do?
Elena's muted.
Oh, can you unmute Elena, please? Thank you. Do you want to do like the 23rd of November, just as a kickoff to get us going? Because I think we're going to have to meet to talk about what policies you need to read and review. Does the 23rd work for you?
Doesn't work for me.
Doesn't work for you. How about the 24th?
Doesn't work for me.
Herb, you're a busy man.
Busy.
Yeah.
How about December 7th?
Works for me.
I could do that, yeah. It's for a hard day.
Elena? Oh, can you unmute? Oh, you know what? She's frozen. Catherine, you frozen? She's frozen on my screen. Sorry. I'm going to ask you to unmute because I think I there we go. Sorry, Elena.
Yeah, it's okay.
We're picking a date for committees, policy committee.
I can do any day except Mondays. I'm flexible till middle of December, really flexible, but no, not on Mondays.
So about, we already have a meeting on, do you want to meet? It makes a really long board night for you, but you could meet on the December of the board meeting night, the 8th or 8, how about 8, 9, or 10?
9th and 10th will work for me.
Works for me.
9th?
Herb, you want the 9th?
Yeah, not the 8th, not the 8th.
Thanks for a long night.
The 9th would be okay, I guess.
One time, Herb.
Anytime.
You want to do December 9th at like 3 P.M.?
Is that good?
Or if you want, earlier, later? All right, 3 P.M. it is.
3 P.M. is like really a good time for me.
3 P.M. it is.
Breaks up the whole day.
Thank you. And we will, we will push out the real committees to you. I apologize for that, for that error.
Okay, we're back, are we?
You're back. On to old business. Here we go.
Okay, what goals?
So I submitted to you, I tried to show you some alignment so that you can see what your broad goals, when they're written, how they align through down to administrative goals and the measures and down to the teacher goals. So the intent here is that they're aligned all the way up through our mission statement, which is why I put it in there. So you, you know, I didn't add anything to the board goals because I wasn't sure what you wanted me to do. But I left them as they were. Extend these through 2021. And then these are, you know, drafts of the administrative goals. And if you remember, the State Department of Education said a focus on culture, climate, communication, the SEL portion of this, and that's what their administrative measures are around entirely. There are some academic measures in there, but again, they're almost connected to, you know, collaborative learning and connected to the SEL portion, students working collaboratively. We're working on revising our intervention process. We were just literally given today a priority standards document from the state, which is nice. So that'll be, we'll be working on that on the portion of the graduate concept. So you know, and then you take that down to some of the teacher goal samples and, you know, what they've written already around culture and climate and communication. So wanted to give you a sense of the vertical alignment. And that's critically important to the success of the district. If the teachers are doing, working on one thing and admin is working on another, your B.O.E. goals are somewhere else. Nothing gets done. And so there's alignment right now between these, these three areas.
Okay. So this is a draft, right, of the goals? They're up for discussion purposes and amendment purposes and things of that kind. Looks, looks to me like, you know, what? When you look at the goals that we have had and so forth, we've seen the Connecticut State Department of Education seems to be deciding what our fundamental goals are and I'm surprised that they are stressing, nothing, it's not needed, it's important. You know, the social and emotional aspect of learning. And the, if you look at all of the goals that we hear, we have here, we have the school culture and communication and working with the social media and things like that. Whatever happened to some of the basic things like English and math and history and social studies? Visit all those, from my point of view, basic things. I would like to see our students and I'm sure our staff are doing what they can with this, but making sure that students get this. But it looks like a large portion of our energies and the energies of our school is going into these other areas. Not that they're not important, they help with the student growth and their success and all of that, but when we talk about student achievement, I think of their scores, like we're in a pandemic and we're, all indications are that remote learning is not as good as face-to-face in the classroom. So the test scores are going to be affected. But the achievement of the students is going to be less than we've had in the, in the past. I don't know what the answer is, except that, you know, that's just one observation that I have in relation to the, the goals that I see here. And what my expectations are. I don't see a good balance between the two. I think the balance is in the area of, you know, probably what the State Department of Education wants. And I don't know who at the State Department of Education made the proposal, you know?
Commissioner.
Proposals.
Herb, I think those are, those are listed under Identify and Target Key Standards of Growth from the Common Core Common Core of Teaching. I believe that.
One line.
The academic.
I know, it's in there, but it's, it's kind of buried in there a little bit. And thank you for pointing that out. So I'm sure everyone has an opportunity to look these over and digest them and we have three items there that are concerned with the Board of Education, which are overall goals for, and the administration tax into those. Teachers come along next. But we set the course really with our goals. The first one is student growth and success. Any comments regarding that first goal? The willingness of public schools and foster intellectual risk-taking and increase achievement for all students through rigorous, relevant, engaging curriculum.
And one address is yours, Herb, begin there. Subject areas. In a roundabout way.
Okay.
Anna has her hand up, Herb.
Oh, can you unmute her, please?
Who was it?
Donna needs to be unmuted.
I don't, okay, Donna?
Well, hold on. She's got to be unmuted by Catherine first.
Sorry. Sorry, somebody was printing something and it started to squeak, so I muted myself. When I look at this, I think that as a Board of Ed, we should be really clear about what we hope the outcome would be. Um. And when you, when we have to search for what they're actually going to be learning, you know, they need the reading, the writing, the arithmetic. Those of you who are not on the finance group didn't get the opportunity to actually see what was submitted by the bid packets. And I'm sure that they do a really great job at whatever they do. But the packet had very specific instructions. And none of them followed the instructions. And, you know, if you're trying to get a job or even submit something into a teacher and the teacher gives you very specific instructions, you have to follow the instructions. Whether you like it or not, whether you think it's reasonable or not, that you can discuss with them. But here we had four different But here we had four different companies and no one could follow instructions. So I, when we do vague stuff, I know we're trying to, to capture it all. Um, but nothing says they're going to learn what they need to learn so that they're prepared for life. Or at least this, a section of it. And that's what my concern is. We've got, you know, a whole bunch of kids that have graduated from high school that can't get a full-time job to, forget about the COVID aspect. Um, but if they chose to, it would be very difficult for them to get a full-time job to even support themselves with roommates. It's almost predetermined that a majority of them have to go on to further education. And I think we're doing a disservice. It should be a choice for those that want to go on to further education. But it just seems like we're shortchanging the kids when they're not getting the strong enough foundation through the schools. And we're, and we're, and, and our elementary and middle school are the first two steps for them getting these foundations.
Donna, do you feel like a rigorous, relevant and engaging curriculum does not include that?
Well,
I'm not sure where you're going with it. Is it something specific in the language that you think is lacking and you would add?
Well, engage, engage, what kind, there's, there's not enough to me rigorous, relevant. I, I can tell you most of the stuff my kids learned was not relevant. Um, and the stuff that was important wasn't covered and the stuff that was covered. And I don't want to give specific examples because it's, wouldn't be fair to the teachers. But, you know, we're, we picked up the phone and called and said, can you please explain this to me? And it was just a lot of inaccurate information being taught. Um, and the, once it was presented, the teacher didn't refute it. So I, I'm just really concerned about the quality of what it is. And when I start to look at how it drills down, um, it just, I, I don't get where they're getting what they need to get out of it. And maybe I'm just not understanding.
We have a curriculum committee that's supposed to help set the curriculum. So the goals are meant to be at a high level. And then the curriculum committee could help define and look at what includes. I'm not sure how you could edit the goal and make it so specific to include everything, get general enough to be still the goal and not be the objective. The curriculum, you know, we don't want to list everything, single thing that's, that's learned in school. Tracy has her hand up.
Tracy?
Yeah, I'll just add to that. My understanding too is besides the curriculum, we also have the Common Core standards that drive our, our curriculum and what the teachers teach. And then we have the teacher evaluation that requires teachers to teach in a certain manner and with rigor. Am I correct, Phil? So all of these, we have the umbrella of the goals and then there's several other pieces underneath that. And then it trickles down to the teachers to, with the grade levels and the curriculum, you know, the materials that we're using, the professional development. So I think there's a, this whole tree that we're not seeing all the parts of when we just look at the goals by themselves.
So my question is, because it sounds like there's a lot of state mandated, like this is what, you know, the, the curriculum has to meet certain criterias. So, and if, so do we really do this or is this the state that tells us what it has to be?
It starts at the federal level, I believe, and then goes to the state level and then comes to us.
So is there a, a federal or state board mission statement that we have to be adopt? And this, is this close to what that would be?
The Common Core is federal.
The Common Core, Common Core are state standards. They're, they're adopted by the state.
Yeah.
Day, okay.
Yeah, but they're the standards.
That's the common part. The common across states.
Exactly. They've been adopted by 30 something states. And the next generation science standards is, is this for science and then the social studies framework. We always tend to forget the content areas and I have to speak up.
My question, because I'm one of the few non-teachers. As a teacher, when you look at this, does this tell you what the outcome is supposed to be?
I don't know.
This doesn't. And if it does, then I'm fine because this is not my area of expertise.
Increased, increased achievement would be the outcome.
Yeah.
And then we were working on that growth model, right? So that we're measuring for each child what their growth is, and that would be their increased achievement. And then also as grades and.
Elena has her hands raised.
Elena, I can't see you, but if you're there, go ahead, you have the floor.
I, I think I understand from where Donna comes. If I understand that right, she probably wants to see more practical touch in our goals. So I wonder if we can add something like academic preparation, to prepare children competitive, on the level to be competitive in the high school, like to prepare them, like somehow mention, mention in our goals, that our goal to see our Willington children to be on a competitive level when they come to the high school. So maybe we can make it that, put it, I know it's kind, it's, it's, it's very precise, it's more precise, but maybe it will give a little bit down to earth touch to our goals, that that's practically what we want to see, that our Willington children, I said, oh, they are from Willington. You know, they, they know their stuff. So that's the practical side. And also to the goals, I would like to see in the, I would like to see in the goals for this particular year, a reflection of what our society goes through with COVID now. Maybe we can even mention it somehow, somewhere, otherwise it didn't, it sounds like it's like we're out of this world, like COVID is not here. But if we will reflect, yes, we are, we are working on it. We are making it priority to keep our children safe during this challenging time too. So that's my thinking. To make it more down to earth and more open, more practical for whoever is reading it.
Um, Elena, when, where we have a welcoming environment that is socially, emotionally and physically safe, we could, especially during these times of COVID, parenthesis on parenthesis.
I think it's already something, so to make a difference, to show that we know what's going on. So it's not just a, you know, like a stamp, boom, we put that stamp every, every year. At least it's.
So I need to chime in on something, Herb.
Yeah.
I'm going to go back to something that Michelle said last meeting that really kind of struck me. That's, it's, this is a strange time. And one of the things that she said last meeting was typically you would have a retreat to go through these things and talk about identifying. Typical board goals are not one years, one-year goals. If, if I can, I can show you the Mansfield goals. If you would like to see, like, get a sense of, you know, I mean, typically you would have a five-year plan and your goals would highlight some sections and, you know, you, your administrator's job and your superintendent's job is to make what your overarching things, what you're looking for, come to life. And so, you know, my job and Elena, I think this is where the step down is, is that if your goal is what's in the language of the goal, you would expect me, when my administrators write their goals and when I have a goal, that my, our goals will align to, hey, we fully understand it's COVID times. We need to make sure our goals address that. You could also do that as a board. I don't know if I could still share my screen. It just, if this helps and get a sense.
You, you align your goals with the board goals, right? When you're.
Correct.
Together.
Correct.
That's right.
No, because we didn't do a staff retreat, I mean, a board retreat.
I mean, like, previous, like a previous one, like that maybe where, I mean, I, I don't know.
So that's, that was one of my goals of the five things we had last year. We had five goals and that was one of them. And then COVID hit. And so we didn't build out those five-year plan.
Okay.
Allow me to share my screen real quick. I just, I think it's important just to give you a sense, and I just looked this really fast. I don't know if this is what you're looking for, but, you know, basically this is the Mansfield Board of Education. They have their mission there. They made some we believe statements as a board and noticed that this is a five, part of their five-year plan. And, and what that does is it gives the district and the superintendent direction. Because you know to do things well, you need more than one year. What they did is they wrote their goals under district framework. And basically, we would take, I guarantee there's a, a five-year plan in Mansfield that's then connected to this district framework. And so they've highlighted what they're really looking for. Students that are in instructional practices, rigorous academic outcomes. And I think this is the.
So they talk about learning. They actually mentioned the word learning.
This habits of mind is they're getting at the portrait of the graduate. But they're targeting students that are in instructional practice. That's one of their, their big drives. And, you know, all of these things are tied to it. So, but again, this is a five-year, this is the, you know, we had a goal like this too. We took it out this year because in our administrative goals, not a board goal, in our administrative goals, last year we had a three to five-year plan and we had a, a plan around, you know, building some SEL and diversity. So it's just an example, you know, of some of the other things out there.
But I like the fact that, like, we never say we want our kids to learn.
Not in so many words, but it's definitely there.
Well, I don't want to be a sticking point, so whatever the rest of the board wants, but I would love it if we emphasize that we want the kids to learn.
I think that we should also look at document as something that's a one-year plan stone towards a conversation that will take this, the seven of us three to four hours to walk through how to build a five-year plan. It's a long-term meeting to really.
You have to have more, more than.
Two meetings, multiple meetings. So for, the question is, is this enough for this year as a stepping stone to a five-year plan?
Well, considering the year's mostly over, I mean, it only goes until June of 2021. So it, it kind of already is what's happening. Then I'd be willing to accept it as it is.
Okay.
Yeah, because the teachers probably, the teachers are probably following the goals that we have here. I think Phil implied this previously, that where the school has started, that he was interested in making sure that, that the teachers were, were plugged into the goals as well.
We have to have something, something totally very specific to that, for them not to have a connection, alignment, because I'm giving them our goals too.
Yeah.
Michelle.
Well, we, we could, we could do two things. Have a retreat and go over the goals and work on them and develop them. Well, we could approve the goals that we have here and in the future, get back to it and work on them. Because the school year is already started, basically. Michelle?
I move that we accept the draft 2021 Board of Education goals as they're written here and move ahead for a retreat in July to discuss a five-year plan.
A second.
That's two motions, right? Why don't we just do one first? Michelle?
I will separate, I will, I will accept your friendly amendment to separate them into two separate motions. So the first one is to accept the goals as stated.
Okay, so the motion is to accept, it's fine, accept the minute, the minutes, the goals for the year 2020, 2021.
I second it.
Okay, it's moving seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, so we're just voting on the draft of the goals for one year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, aye. Oppose? Abstentions? It's unanimous. We're all together on this. How about the?
I don't think we need the second half of the motion, Herb. I think that that was extraneous. We'll come back and talk about that.
Okay.
Next year when we know we can be together.
Okay. Okay, where are we now? Back to any other old business? Did we have some?
Are you opening it up to the floor?
Let's move to present to speak. You almost caught me on that, Michelle. Okay, present to speak. Phil, do we have anyone out there?
You are on the computer and you want to chime in? You can just unmute, raise your hand, please. Again, go to participants, because it doesn't look like anybody's on the phone. If you go to participants, you should be able to click yourself and raise your hand. Going once. Oh, Annabelle Krieger, we, we have a student that would like to ask a question. Can you unmute Annabelle Krieger, please? Annabelle, you are unmuted.
Okay, so I'm a student at ESMA and as part of politics class, I have to attend a committee meeting and study like the structure of it. But I was just going to say that since we've had online and in-campus learners since the spring, it's been harder to like see how much students are actually learning. So I know that there's the early dismissal proposal in place to check in with online learners and ensure that they're learning. But I was wondering if there's any other plans or programs in place to see how much backlog there has been since the spring?
Thanks, Annabelle.
Okay.
Herb, typically we don't, Annabelle, you know.
We usually listen during present to speak, we don't usually comment.
You can mute Annabelle again. Anybody else that has a question? Should put my daughter on the spot, make her ask a question. She's still up at 9:30 listening to this meeting. Anybody else, if you want to just hover over, you can raise your hands. All right, Herb, nobody else raising their hand?
Okay, we're down to board comments. Okay, who would like to be first? Anne, you raised your hand, did you?
Alrighty, first of all, I'd like to thank Becky for her time as the health teacher and welcome our new Spanish teacher. And then also to thank our teachers for going way, 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 way above and beyond for everything they're doing now for our children. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Anne. Michelle?
So like Anne, I'm super excited about having filled the Spanish position and welcome Ms. Alvarado to our team. And we hope you love it here and stay for a very long time. A special thank you to Dr.
A special thank you to Dr. Knox for the instrument donations and a reminder out to the community that donations of different sorts are welcome at the schools but need to be coordinated. Don't just drop them off at the door. But I'm sure a lot of us might have instruments in our closets that could go to good use there. Welcome to all the high school students who are sitting in on this type of a meeting. We all do this as volunteers, except for Mr. Stevens who gets paid. And we do this every month because we care about the education you're receiving. And sometimes it's contentious, but we are doing this because all of us in our hearts are trying to support your learning and the learning that you had when you were students here in Wellington. So it's the, the good work of the kids that were, and the teachers and the staff that we're supporting. And we hope you learned something today. And we're glad to have you come anytime you would like. And of course, I have to say that I am very disappointed. We did not get a chance to resolve our mental health services conversation. I will be sending the chairman a letter very specifically asking that it be added to the agenda or added to a special meeting within the next month, because that was what we discussed at the end of July and into August. And I believe that was the track that we're on. To change that track is incorrect and very disrespectful to people who are participating in that in good faith. So I hope we will continue to have that conversation and answer people's questions so that we can come to some that we can all live with. So we will be talking about it further and I will be providing all of you with all of my research so that you can see where we're starting from and where my background is on parliamentary procedure and why it's perfectly fine for us to revisit this topic at every meeting. Okay, I'm off my soapbox now. You can have it, Herb.
Tracy?
Um, I will excuse me. I'm really tired. I was up late working on a project.
Okay, take your time.
Yeah, just to say thank you again to Becky. And welcome the Spanish teacher. I am excited for our students to have a Spanish teacher again because I feel like I wish we could have had someone during distance learning and had filled that position back, been able to fill that position back in the spring. Because I think our students going into high school had a really large gap that is taking time to catch up with. That's unfortunate circumstance of the circumstances we're in. And yeah, thank you to all the students who are here today. And please come back and join us anytime.
Okay. Anyone? Donna or Laura?
Laura, so bienvenidos, Dr. Joni Alvarado. I'm so very happy that Spanish is back in the school. I was fortunate to have Spanish from third grade on and it provided amazing opportunities for me. Thank you for Becky Muldoon for your teaching and good luck with your new adventures. The same round of thank yous to the cleaning crew, especially after the election, because that must have been a huge job, to Dr. Knox for the clarinet. Clarinet, I think that's absolutely wonderful. And always a thank you to the teachers who right now are doing double duty, planning for both on-ground and online learning. Thank you so much for the students who are here. Like to reiterate, I couldn't say it as well as, as Michelle said about that, you know, we can be contentious, but we're all here because we really care about education of the children in our community. And then the last thing I need to share has nothing to do with this meeting, but it has been absolutely killing me, is this entire meeting that my foster daughter just had her baby and I got the first picture of the baby at seven, what was it, seven-thirty this evening? So I have a new little grandson. So I just had to share that with as many people as possible. Thank you.
And you held it in. I'm impressed.
Ah, it was hard.
Okay, Donna?
Congratulations to the entire Rodriguez family. I would not have been sitting there through the media. I would have been showing the phone. So congratulations, best wishes to mommy and baby and the rest of the family. And Michelle hit on a really great point when she talked about the clarinet. I think that lots of us are purging our closets and, and that way. And so, yes, most definitely, if you have things that you think could bless somebody else, either the superintendent's office or probably even better would be Jenny at Wellington Youth and Family Services, because she knows who has needs and can get things into the right hands so that we can bless other people here in Wellington. So. And I think this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving. So I wish the entire Wellington community a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. I hope you get to enjoy it and celebrate it with those that matter most to you.
Thank you, Donna. Elena?
Yes, I would like to say that I'm joining with all the thanks, with all the good words which were said before me. But I would like to add thank you to Phil Stevens for taking such a timely decision with the air purifiers, because I know it's just so important now. And the fact that we did not miss it and you took that risk and took the decision, we really, really appreciate it as it could, they could make now a huge difference. Somebody will not get sick. So thank you so much, Phil. I appreciate it. And happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Okay, Laura, congratulations.
Thanks.
You're a proud person right now, I haven't mentioned.
Very happy.
That's very nice. Phil, I want to thank you for all the information you provided us with this evening. It was quite informative. And also I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And we will see you in a few weeks. Take care.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Yes, give me a chance. Finish. Okay, you want to adjourn, I guess. We are adjourning at, at nine forty. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all and have a safe and healthy month and week and year. See you later.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.